We call the meeting room to order. If you all recall, this is a continuation of our November 9 discussion on solar energy system regulations, limited solar system regulations. Staff, I hope you've had a chance to review your packets. Staff has gone through and made the changes that we indicated at our February 5 meeting. He's also got some other suggestions that we're going to be discussing this evening. We'll probably go paragraph by paragraph again, just kind of the same drill, if that's all right, if that pleases the board. In that way, we can kind of stay disciplined in our order and discussion. Now, staff, do you have any overarching comments you want to make about the document you shared with us?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, so in your packet, you have one set of regulations that has highlights in it, and these are additional suggestions that came about after this board kind of gave staff further direction on what you wanted to do with the solar regulations. And so there's some other suggestions that I have, and I think as the chairman wants to do, we'll all explain those in more greater detail as we go through each section. I made all the changes this board requested last month. I hope you reviewed those and found them to be satisfactorily. The second set of regulations, if you want, is what we call like a clean copy. And so that is, if this board would choose to accept all of staff's recommendations, this could potentially be the document that this board would recommend to the county commissioners if you so choose. Now, keep in mind, you know, you can also make additional changes to that, and if you so choose, you can make a motion to accept these and approve, subject to additional changes, if you want. Or you can, again, continue this meeting. I can go back and make those changes, and then you can see another clean copy, if you will. The last document is actually the table of contents. And as you recall, with the initial public hearing, part of the text amendments that we were doing was for the table of contents. If we get to that point, then I would ask for some more time, Mr. Chairman. I can kind of explain motions and all that, if you will, if this board feels comfortable enough. And so I'll have some other comments based off of our discussion, you know, tonight before we would get to a point where this board makes some kind of motion. I think the one directive you kind of gave me a little bit here was to kind of research the container, if you will, of storing batteries. And so I did do a little bit of research on what is a fireproof container. As you can probably tell by the regulations, I did not have a lot of success with that. And so I just kind of left it as is. I mean, I looked at building codes and other regulations, and I didn't really see anything that I thought would match what we want to do. And so I just kind of left it in the regulations as just put your batteries in a container and call it good. If you want, I can do something different or so, or we can have further discussion on that. But I didn't find anything in my research that would maybe help us in that. So therefore, I didn't put a definition of a fireproof container in there and didn't really expand upon that too much. And so that'd be my comments right now.
Sure. We'll call upon you as we get to highlighted areas and as discussions. Appreciate that. So we'll feel pleased the board will just start in. We'll go 25-101, subsection 2.
Mark, a point of inquiry. You suggested that Mark had some additional changes, and Mark suggests implied he had some. Is there some way I can identify those in this document you've given us?
The additional suggestions are the ones that are highlighted in the yellow.
Oh, okay.
And so you'll see in there items that are highlighted yellow and are struck through. So those would be items that would potentially be removed from the document. And then some of the stuff is just highlighted yellow, and it warrants further discussion and explanation by staff as to why it's highlighted yellow. The document that is, does not have any highlights, is what will be what we call the clean copy, if you will. And so that will have all those items that are struck through removed.
Okay.
Okay? I think it'll probably make more sense of why some of that stuff was struck through once you kind of hear staff's explanation as to why I did that. Certainly, I'd say we can have further discussion if we need to, whatever the board wants to do in that case.
We'll just jump right in, and you can just continue on with that subparagraph 2 on 25-101. You had that struck through.
So it says right now that a commercial solar energy system, as noted in Article 15 and defined in Article 25, is prohibited in the unincorporated portion of Reno County. Well, the reason that is struck through right now is because there's been no directive or determination from the county commissioners that we are going to be prohibiting commercial solar regulations and solar farms in the zoned area of the county. And so the directive was to stop writing commercial solar regulations, but it has not been given to us that we actually prohibit them in the zoned areas. So this number 2 right here is something that doesn't really apply. If it comes about that we want to prohibit then commercial, then there'll be some other further text amendments that we have to do. So it was anticipated that we would have an answer from the county commission on this. And so that's why this was left in for so long. But right now, as of today, we do not have that determination. And so right now, if the board wants to recommend these set of regulations, then this needs to be struck and taken out right now.
Can I ask? I mean, we're making a set of regulations to be presented to the board of county commissioners, and they will review it. They are entitled to make changes, send it back to us, whatever they want to do. So if we were to leave that in, then the commission would be the one that would make the decision whether to leave it or pull it.
True. But that also drives all your other text amendments that you're talking about. Are there other?
Not really. I think.
Not so much in the other highlighted areas.
Either 28 or 115, 118, or whatever that you reference in there.
There will be other text amendments that we have to do if the goal is to prohibit commercial solar in the zoned area of the county that will have to occur under Article 15. These regulations that we're doing right now are just for the limited scale version. And so when we're talking about commercial, it doesn't really apply to these regulations. If, in fact, we want to have commercial regulations, then we would have to revisit that original draft.
We have to amend 115 or Article 15 anyway, don't we? Because of the including solar, the solar as an accessory use.
Yeah, we would have to amend that, yeah.
That's going to be so. It's not a big deal either way.
Well, right now, you know, if this is adopted, then, yeah, we could amend Article 15 to include the limited scale commercial solar, or it could just be left as an undefined type of land use. I mean, we got several undefined land uses in Article 15. I mean, you've got to imagine that, you know, we don't have every single potential land use that you could ever have in that article. It's just a suggestion of 50, 55 types of common land uses. And so this would be one where if there's no more text amendments needed, then we could just leave it as an undefined type of land use, and then it would still require that conditional use permit in there because it's not a residential or agricultural land use in the regulations.
So if we're eliminating this subsection here, do we need to change the title of Article 25? Because our scope has really changed from all sorts of solar energy system regulations to just limited scale commercial.
Right.
Yes, you could, I guess. I mean, I'm open if you wanted to change the title to it. You certainly can. I mean, that's an easy change, seeing that, yeah, that the residential solar would be placed under Article 15 when we get to that point.
Yeah, we exclude this.
We're making no reference to commercial. Yeah, we're not making any reference to commercial or anything like that. So we could change the title to limited scale commercial if you would like, or we'll just leave it as.
If the commission decides, no, we want to exclude commercials, you know, then we're going to put it back in, and then you'd have to change the title again.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah, I'd leave, I think I would leave the title as a solar energy system.
Kind of depends on what the commission wants to do with that. And, you know, that's why I'm saying, you know, we can leave this one section in and let them make the decision whether they want to exclude it or not in the zoned areas. And if they do, then it's in there, just goes through. If they don't want it in there, then they can send it back to them and change that.
But there's another way of saying the same thing, is we could take it out, and then if the elected commissioners want to put it back in, then they could also make that recommendation. I guess I support Mark's strike of that section, item number 2.
I would think that you would want to give them a set of regulations that solely has to do with what you're regulating. This states a statement saying that a particular type of solar is prohibited, and that is just not so. And these regulations have nothing to do with that solar type of solar system.
So. No, I see your point, yeah.
That's kind of what drove that, is because we had words in there like prohibited. And so at the time it was written, it was making that assumption, but we don't have that direction right now. And so that's why I felt like striking that at that point.
I guess in some degree, it just makes me a little nervous that we're developing the regs for the limited scale solar and basically leaving it wide open for commercial.
That's true.
With no regulation at all.
Yeah, that's true.
And that was our direction, though.
That was the direction of the county.
Yeah, I listened to the meeting. I understand.
I think that that will get resolved.
Well, if we'd like to put that in, left that in there, then we'll.
Well, if we, I would be much more concerned if we didn't have a moratorium that we were working underneath. If we didn't, then I'd be concerned and maybe leave that statement in there. But right now, there really isn't any risk to taking that statement out.
I totally agree with that, but, you know, I mean, the moratorium will expire in a few months.
Well, it's out of our purveyance whether or not it gets extended or not. We can give some advice, but that's not what we're here to visit about. You know, I think it fits more with the commercial side of things, and we're talking about the limited scale, and we're not trying to prohibit anything related to limited scale. I think it could go away, in my opinion.
So what's the majority thought on this?
That's, I was just getting ready, getting ready to go down the line. Haley, what are your thoughts?
Well, I could see both sides, but I'm okay with striking it.
Garth?
Our charge is to deal with limited scale, so I think that's what we should restrict ourselves to.
Okay. Jack?
I'd go with that.
Same.
I can see.
Alan, Harley?
I think I agree with the other side of the table.
I already stated my case.
Yep, so strike that subparagraph. Next, we work, we want to move forward to 25-103, subsection 4. Qualified third-party company. Here's another strike through. Mark, you want to kind of talk you to that?
You're going through the highlighted ones right now?
Yeah, that's really, that's the only changes that have been made outside of what we've discussed and approved already, correct?
Yep, unless there's further.
Unless there's any.
I would just remind the board that, yeah, that the draft that you saw, you know, was pretty messy with different highlights and stuff, and so probably a little bit hard to read. And then now the versions you have kind of cleaned that up. And so certainly, if there are other suggestions, comments, concerns, you know, now's the time to bring those up.
For all means, don't let my haste in moving through past the non-highlighted mean that we need, if you have something you want to visit about, please bring it up.
So regarding number 4, the qualified third-party company definition, based off this board's direction last month, you know, we're not doing a developer's agreement. So therefore, the county's not going to be hiring a third-party company to review the project and ensure compliance with the regulations that we're just dealing with, one single 10-acre site. So based off all that, nowhere in this document is there mention of a qualified third-party company. So really, we do not need to have that definition anymore.
Good. Jack, you okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay, please strike that.
I have, we're still in the same section.
Yep.
Number 8 and 9. I drove out to Huntsville a couple days ago just to take a look at that, and I was totally impressed. And I'm not sure what the threat is from an installation like that. I mean, I'm not suggesting that there is, but it made me think, if I want to, as a private individual, construct one of these, meeting these requirements that we're proposing, why would I not be allowed to sell that product?
Well, in the private side, it says net metering is permitted. So, you know, if your provider would allow it to be sold back, or you're net zero, that's still allowed. So I guess in my mind, that tells me that you're selling some energy back to them to some extent.
Yeah, right before that, it says that the electricity generated is not transferred or sold to a third party. Now, I don't have anything in mind as far as how that would actually happen, other than I might sell it to my neighbor, or, you know, I might put a.
Your provider probably already is. I mean, if you are net metering, it probably already is.
It just struck me that we're imposing on that landowner and their ability to use their land. If I was selling pumpkins or goats or something off of my 10-acre patch, that seems to be okay, but electricity, this is saying I can't do that. I might want to put a charging station out there and charge people to come, charge up their batteries.
Right.
And the other question, which I don't really know, but thinking of Arc Valley, I suspect that they do in some way sell power back to their, I think it's called Kepco, is their co-op power supplier. So if they generate excess power, I assume that they sell that back. I don't know if this is a problem for them to have that language in there or not.
To me, the electrical co-ops, which, you know, this basically is designed to accommodate, I think, you know, they use solar to supplement their other energy sources. You know, it's not a case like you're describing where I'm going to put in a solar field and I'm going to provide electricity, okay? To do that, you're going to have to have some kind of a battery array to store it for if you have, you know, cloudy days and everything else when you don't have any electricity generation. So if you don't have a reliable, ongoing source of electricity, just in a standalone solar field that's not tied into anything else, you know, in my mind.
Yeah, I get that. So Garth, I ask you a question. So are you wanting to take your suggestion, a private solar system, and you own it, and you create a limited-scale solar system? So now it's not a private solar system. You're wanting to have 10 acres and say, it's my private solar system. No, now you're a limited-scale solar system like a co-op, only you're the owner and selling it to whoever. So I don't think you can have both, but that's just my.
And even under the limited scale, it says it can't be transferred to a third party.
Yeah, now that, like an Arc Valley of the world can't go to a third party, I've not, I'm not, I don't have an answer for that, so I'm not answering that. It's just a difference of you owning a private system, and then now you're like a co-op selling it to somebody else that's not a private system anymore. So I think that's the difference there. The third-party question on, like, the limited scale that's not private, I don't know the answer to that.
Probably that it's referencing there is like on the commercial scale, you know, solar systems, you know, they generate electricity and they sell, they have a contract somewhere they're selling it, somewhere else, out of state even, or whatever. So it's not necessarily for use by the company that's generating it, such as the Arc Valley situation. They generate, you know, they have solar, it supplements their own system. They're not reselling it to another utility down the road.
I think, I believe from me talking to the county commission, what they really want as far as limited scale is something that provides electricity to Reno County residents and maybe on the skirts of it because, you know, that system overlaps, but not somebody that's going to put one of these in, and all that electricity is going to go someplace else. So I don't know how to solve the question, but I know that that's what they're thinking. And that's what we are considered, limited-scale solar systems, as far as like the, you know, the Arc Valleys of the world. Most of that is being sold to residents right here in Reno County. And so I think county commissioners are all for that type of system. I think, I believe, my opinion is if we was allowing these to be built and all of it went outside of this county, I don't think the county commissioners, I don't think that's their intent of what they want as far as these. And I don't think that's what's asking to be built here at this point either. So.
To me, they're not building these to sell the electricity to another utility. They're building these to buy less.
That's right.
Right.
Exactly.
So they're going to use these megawatts first and then buy from Energy or from whoever the rest that they need, because they don't have any generating capacity. Arc Valley doesn't. I mean, other co-ops do. So with that statement, I don't know that selling to third party is an issue. I don't know that that's an issue, because they're building it to supplement so that they don't have to buy. They're not building it to sell it to somebody else other than their users.
Yeah.
So I don't know. But I think I, I think I hope I made sense on the residential versus, you know, you making it so big now it's not a residential use. Now you're selling it to somebody. That's two different, two different systems. Yeah, I understand that. It just struck me, why don't we want it to be sold? And another scenario might be a group of neighbors that might want to put up five acres of solar panels and, you know, maybe, depending on how it would be structured, they could sell that power to each other. One could sell it to the other neighbors, or they might decide to have their own electrical cooperative.
Yeah, they could do that, but then it's not a residential. That's more of a limited scale, and you do the conditional use. So if you want to have your own little solar panel field and invite people to come charge their cars or sell it to other people for other uses, then that's a limited scale, and you do a conditional use permit, and then that would go through that review process. You know, the private is meant just strictly for your own personal use, to run your milk barn or to power your house, that type of stuff.
When you start selling it to your neighbors or anybody else, now you're a business.
Yeah.
Yeah, I get that part.
So then you would apply for the same as Arc Valley would.
But my original thought as I was driving back was, well, why is selling electricity different than selling pumpkins or swine or corn or, I mean, we sell that stuff all over the world and nobody cares, but now it's electricity and suddenly we're getting restrictive.
Those rates that the co-ops can charge are regulated, as the rates are, all the electric rates for all customers are regulated to some degree. Co-ops are regulated through Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, and other customers are regulated through the Kansas Corporation Commission. So with my many years of experience, I don't see anything wrong with the words we have here. I'm comfortable with this.
Your example, the difference, you know, given selling pumpkins or cantaloupes or what have you, is statute has exempted ag uses from zoning, and so that's why they can do that. Statute hasn't exempted solar farms from zoning, and so that's why we have the opportunity to regulate that as we see in that period case. And so, you know, you may not want to live next to somebody's private solar field, you know, where other people are invited in to charge their vehicle, what have you, without at least being notified of somebody's opportunity that they want to change the land use on their property from ag residential to something of a commercial nature. It may not be an issue, but you still have the right to be notified of that change and be able to come to a public hearing and comment on that.
Good, I, I, good dialogue. Thank you.
Yes.
No, maybe.
I'm not good, but it is a muddy issue. And, you know, I think I'm just feeling the restriction that we're working under here to create these limitations that don't seem to be consistent with other activities in the county.
But, now, I may be wrong. Correct me if I'm wrong. With these two systems, you have an opportunity to do either one of them as a private citizen. You can have it for your residential use, or you can apply for and have a business and sell it to your neighbors. You have that opportunity here.
How do I sell it if it says I can't transfer to a third party?
So if you create a business with solar and you sell it to your neighbors, so that's a second party, isn't it?
I don't know. I'm not an attorney.
I don't know either. I mean, where's the? I think that if, I don't know. I'm not an attorney either. It would appear to me that if you're, that you're creating it and you're selling it, it's one party, and if you're selling it to another electric company, then that's another party. I don't know. I'm not an attorney neither, so.
If that's the case, I would, I would feel okay.
I don't know if that's the case, but I don't know. Now, if you're a resident and you're selling it, then that's not what it's meant to be. But if you're a business and they're selling it, that's what it's meant to be.
Right.
So what do you think a third party is?
I think it's just what we talk about in commercial conversion. I think the third party is in that spirit of that commercial conversion that gets sold on the open market. That's my interpretation.
And that's not your neighbors.
No.
It's unrelated, you know, party, as they call it.
So I could sell it to my neighbor, as long as I get a permit.
For the limited scale.
Yeah.
Yep. That's the way I interpret that.
That's the way I interpret it?
Yes.
So I guess the way I'm.
So I guess the way I'm, you know, I'm trying to understand what you're saying, Garth. It's like, like I, I have a property just to the west of that Huntsville solar farm there. It's wheat now. But like hypothetically, if I were to win the lottery and I'm suddenly flush with cash and I want to get into the electricity business and put 10 acres of solar panels on, you know, my 80 of wheat. But if I just hook in and I'm selling it to whoever, that's prohibited, right? And you're asking what the difference is between the 10 acres of Arc Valley solar and Schaefer's fabulous electrons?
At that, at that, okay, in that, in that instance.
Because in that instance, that would just be selling it to the open market. So that would be prohibited, right?
You would all, you would be under the, the limited scale regulations.
You're within the two mile radius too.
Well, yeah, be within the two mile radius.
We're going to, we're going to miss that. But let's just say you're three miles down the road.
So then does that?
You're going to have to figure, the, the, much like it is for grain or anything else, you're going to have to figure out where, where you can market that.
Right. Like, say hypothetically, it just gets plugged into the Evergy transmission lines that are going through that section that.
Your net metering back to Evergy.
Well, I, is it net metering or is it just, you know, it doesn't go to my house? It doesn't go to my neighbor's house?
Well, you'd have to have a contract with Evergy or somebody buying that electricity.
So then does that become something? I think I'm just trying to examine Garth's.
Then I think you're, you're step, you're, you're stepping your toe into the third party.
Right, right. And so I guess Garth's observation is what's the difference, right? Is that?
It's a pretty fine line, yeah. It's being sold to someone else.
Right.
I'm not, I'm not using it. I'm selling it to someone else.
Right.
And, I mean, frankly, uh, th- this industry seems to be moving rather rapidly. And I only have to look as far as Arc Valley. And if I understand things right, they now have four of these installs that they are talking about at least. One, the Huntsville one, the Madora one. And I think I heard there's two more sort of floating about. So all of a sudden we've gone to zero to four in a short amount of time. And, and I could see where the, the commercial Evergys of the world, just like in ag production where, you know, you are growing pigs for Cargill or chickens for whoever, you're generating electricity for Evergy. You know, as the industry matures, I think that becomes a lot more feasible.
So what you're saying is what's the difference between corn going to the ethanol plant or your, or your solar energy that you're producing going into the line?
Yeah, that's a good one.
I, I, I think the difference is that the guidance we were given was we're not sending it to.
Somewhere else.
Yeah, yeah. I, I think that's the big difference is that's, that's the guidance we've been received.
So maybe I'm not questioning our work. I'm questioning the guidance.
Now that's a whole nother can of worms.
Harley, you're not going to be out of here in time. Talk fast.
You know, it probably closes at a certain time. We're going to get, but still we got to get to eat.
Do you want to see all the rest of the document? You want me to come back with more specific to, you know, you can make the definition as long as you want in order to clarify it more? Or we can go through the rest of the document, see, see where you're at and.
Well, I, I think Alan kind of summed it up pretty well. And the guidance that we have, I think this probably fulfills that.
That's, that's true. Right now, that was the guidance, the way I understand it.
Ready?
Sorry, that was a side trip.
You're, that is just fine. Good conversation. Good conversation. Uh, we move to item 25106, paragraph one, letter G.
So letter G quite simply is me just rewriting that a little bit. I think I had something to the effect of topography of the parcel should be shown with contour intervals of one foot. Instead, I just put topography of the parcel with one foot contour interval. So I just switched some words around.
Fine.
That's, that's.
Give the river stamp for me. Who's going to give that?
Yep, yep.
Moving on to article 25107, paragraph, I'm just going to lump one and two all together there as, as a discussion point.
We're actually going to take one separate and then lump two and five.
Okay.
If we will. So under number one, what's proposed to be struck is the list of adjacent property or shall be sent electronically. Excel spreadsheet contain property owners' information, essentially. This is put in place with a full commercial scale development where you had potentially thousands of acres and potentially hundreds of property owners being notified. I wanted the property applicant, if you will, to submit the list of notification of people to me electronically so I did not have to come up with that list and have all that mapped out. Now that we've transitioned to a simple 10-acre area or parcel, this really isn't needed. We don't have to have the applicant supply that property list. They will still give it to me, but I can also do it on my, my spreadsheets as well. And so this is really not needed anymore. We required NextEra to give me the, the list of property names in a spreadsheet because there were so many of them at that time and stuff. And so then we developed our own spreadsheet and verified and cross-referenced with them. Now we're only dealing with a 10-acre piece. It's not necessary anymore.
I agree. The list wouldn't be much different than with a, with a, any other conditional use permit application.
Exactly right.
Exactly right.
That?
Okay.
Okay, so struck.
Before we hear that, number two and five kind of go together. Number two is talking about written document submitted by Wildlife and Parks indicating they reviewed this. It goes on to say, you know, we want to have the groundwater management district and USDA review this as well. You go over to number five, then we actually request that the applicant provide us a list of all required state, local and federal government agencies that need to review or approve this.
Duplication.
So it's a duplication. And so I feel like we need to probably just strike those two paragraphs in number two and go with number five that essentially says that they'll provide us a list of those agencies that they are required to have review a project like that.
Makes sense.
I have a question about that last sentence is if that actually protects the county? If we could, if, it sounds like our message is, well, you just go tell us everything that you're not supposed to do or everything that you are supposed to do by any regulatory agency out there. And if you don't, that's your problem. It's not the county's problem.
This came directly from the county councillor.
Okay.
So that was where I was headed.
That's the reason I underlined it because he took the words out of my mouth. So then we sent this to legal and he is of the opinion that it's not the county's job to make sure that the applicant contacts all of the appropriate agencies for, you know, a conditional use permit. So we're going to review it for our regulations. If something is discovered down the line that they didn't contact this agency, that's not on us to be held liable for that. He went so far to say that we probably don't need that sentence in the document. But he said that doesn't hurt to have it in there either. And so we chose to, to leave it in. But, so this is essentially putting the, the notification on the applicant that they need to give us a list of everybody, federal, state, local, and needs to approve of their project and submit those appropriate docu- documents to us. And so we know that they are in communication with, with them.
I even addressed that issue with him to where like, okay, we're providing a permit. We're saying, okay, go build it. But then they didn't notify all the proper authorities they needed to. And the county councillor said that, that will not fall back on us. That is their responsibility. So all of a sudden if that hicks is something, that's going to be their problem.
It's the developers.
Yes.
Right above that, I added the word M to impervious. I, previously I said pervious and I changed it to impervious surface there.
Everybody good with the sub-paragraph two, striking that?
Yeah.
And the, and the changes on four and five?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. We'll move on to article 25108. Paragraph one, sub-paragraph B.
So throughout the document, you'll see words like this highlighted. If you look, and I don't know how it, it's been missed over several reviews, but we're saying limited scale commercial solar energy project. There is no definition of a limited scale commercial solar energy project or anything like that in the whole document. You look at the definition, it's limited scale commercial solar energy system project or so. And so I hope and I caught all of them. I'm not promising, but I hope I did. So throughout the document, you'll see me adding the word like system in there or adding the word solar because I, I just missed that word. So that's what a lot of those are about in that case. Moving on then from paragraph B. Last month, this board decided that no project can be located within two miles of another project. And so I made that change as requested. I also added the two paragraphs below that talking about solar energy system, system or project located within an incorporated city limit boundary or a city's extraterritorial zoning jurisdiction shall be exempt from that two-mile calculation. Reason being is because we don't have jurisdiction in the city limits, obviously. And we don't have jurisdiction in an ETJ of a, of a city. So what this would essentially say is that somebody could put a project inside the city limits or inside the ETJ where there's obviously larger parcels and then go right across the street and put one under our jurisdiction. We would not count the, the project in the ETJ as being in the county's zoning jurisdiction. So, subject to discussion and change. That's what that is saying.
Well, we're a city where some of the cities have their own municipal, municipality. I would sure, sure wouldn't want to limit them based upon what we did with our limited solar regulations. If they would want to put in a plant, put in some sort of system. This, this, this paragraph would allow that, is that am I correct? So if we, if we have one a mile out of town, we're out, just outside of their ETJ to your example. They, they, they want to put one in if they have their own municipal municipality. This would allow that to happen. Okay.
Yep.
I'm good with that. Are there other cities in Stafford that have electrical utilities?
Sterling.
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 There's a, out of Cal, out of our county, but.
Yeah. I just want to clarify that because I don't know if it would ever happen, but make sure that, yeah, we're just dealing with county zoning jurisdiction, not an ETJ or anything like that. And so.
I'm, I'm good with that addition. Does anybody else do that?
Yeah.
And then the second paragraph there talks about how the two-mile restriction is calculated. And that's from the parcel boundary line or the lease boundary line because it, it doesn't have to be ownership, keep in mind. You know, a, a company could come in and just want to lease somebody's ground. And so the two miles would start from that lease boundary. You know, because if you make it a parcel boundary, that could, that could be an issue. So we're talking about if they purchase a 10-acre parcel of ground, that's where that two-mile starts. Or if they decide to just lease that area, that's where the two-mile boundary will start from.
So if they lease 10 acres in a quarter section, that's just on the 10-acre track.
On the 10-acre track, right there.
Gotcha.
I want to go back to the exemption and the reverse of Russ's example. So if a municipality had a, a solar energy system already installed, could someone in the county be within closer than two miles to that?
Yes. It's written, I think so. If somebody has. If the, if the, if it was built in the ETJ before it was in our, in our jurisdiction, in the county jurisdiction. If it was county first and then the ETJ, then.
ETJ, yes.
Then now let's just do the flip-flop.
Once, once it leaves.
Said he put it in first.
Yeah.
Can't somebody come in and put one in within two miles of that one?
If it, if it's not in our jurisdiction, yeah.
Yes, that first one.
Okay.
Yeah.
If it's not in.
It's when they understood you, yeah.
Paying only the solar fields.
Yeah, if they put it in and then annex it in or, or we grant ETJ, then it leaves our jurisdiction and becomes the jurisdiction of that city. Then certainly somebody could come in across the street or next door, whatever, and put one in.
Good clarification, Garth. I was thinking that direction.
Yeah. Well, it goes back to, I probably should not say this, but it goes back to my first question about selling that power because now that would be an opportunity for me as a landowner bordering a municipality who needs power. And I have the land and I put up the solar and I could sell that power to the city. We've already plowed that ground.
Still working on article 25108. Going through the paragraph two, sub-paragraph A. So we added the, the phrase non-participating landowner property lines. Before it, it read, you know, 100 foot from a public right-of-way into all property lines. So you've got to remember that it could be a lease area. And so we want to make sure that we're dealing with the 100-foot setback from a non-participating property owner's property line and not 100 foot from, say, a parcel that starts out being leased and then is purchased. Or if they purchase the 10 acres, it's not 100-foot setback from, you know, the area where the solar farm is sitting. And it's got to be from non-participating property owner's boundary, which is essentially everybody but the, the, but the applicant. Very good with that. Sub-paragraph B.
Yeah. It looks like you just added the word solar.
Yep.
Okay, I have a question about that. Item D. I got all tangled up in the easements that, no project shall be located with any, within any recorded easement, which I get that. But we are also requiring these distribution lines to all be buried, which I assume would include some easement. So I just wasn't able to work through the possibilities of easements required to put the underground lines in. Would those just all stop at the 10-acre boundary or? See what I'm saying?
If it's on the property, it probably would not be in, in easement. It could be, but it's probably not. I think we're, we're talking about other, other easements that are.
We're trying to protect easements for other purposes.
For other purposes. Yeah.
I, I get that and it's. I, I get that and it's, it's just kind of a technicality, but it does seem like there are going to be some easements for potentially required for the distribution lines.
How are easements determined and how, and how we regulate?
Those are not part of the project.
Yeah.
Boundaries though. Those transmission lines are not. Project boundaries would be the 10 acres, which include the solar cells and whatnot. But the transmission lines going to and from or wherever, those would be outside of the project boundaries.
Good? Yeah, kind of.
Yeah, it was just kind of a technical question and I can see, you know, easements are often a little problematic to work through, but.
But if there's an easement determined already, let's just say there's already an existing easement right next to a project, that's usually categorized as a utility easement to where they can, anybody that is of any utility projects can use that easement? Is that how that works?
Right.
So it really.
Unless, yeah, unless specifically prohibited. Yeah, what we're just trying to do is make sure that they don't go there and put solar panels with any kind of, say, pipeline. Pipeline is the biggest one.
Yeah.
You know, there, if there's a, a blanket easement that happens to be on that property, then we'd like to have that clarified as to where exactly should that easement go. I mean.
That's all.
What, I don't know if in this case it would happen. I mean, I think, you know, before they would make application, they'd be doing that type of research and determine. But we just want to make sure that, yeah, that there's nothing that's going to be located within anybody else's easement there.
Okay, letter E.
Letter E, since, uh, since we've gone to the 10 acre maximum, then letter E doesn't really apply. And letter E is meant for the commercial. It was basically giving permission for, uh, the commercial people to relocate or adjust their solar panels on the area that was approved for the condition. I used to remember if there was some type of environmental issue or other factor like an easement, for example, that it's discovered afterwards that they can't locate those panels on their 40 acres if they was part of the conditional use permit, for example. And so since we're down to 10 acres, pretty much the whole 10 acres is more than likely going to be filled with solar panels. And so there's really no need to grant them permission to, to relocate. There's not going to be room for them to readjust and relocate panels elsewhere on that property. And so I felt like it was just, it was just something that was put in place for commercial and it's not really applicable to, to limited scale.
Followed? Yep. Everybody good with striking that paragraph?
Yeah.
Okay. Move you down that page. It looks like you added some, added the solar in.
Add some solar words.
Yeah.
I'll just, uh, move on through to, uh, it would be still the same, same article, but under paragraph eight.
Under paragraph six, I just add the word electrical just to kind of clarify, just to give an example of a type of, of underground line that I'm referring to. That's all I did that. Paragraph A was the battery storage. We eliminated a lot of that based off our discussion from, from last month. And I just said that battery energy storage systems, including the mechanic equipment, shall be enclosed in a building with a locking mechanism to aid in preventing unauthorized acts, uh, access to that. You know, a lot of discussion last month, you know, centered around, you know, a fireproof container. All the research that I did with building codes, I mean, there's several different, you know, levels of, of fireproof. There's not one general, you know, definition of fireproofing. It gets all based off of how long does it take for it to, you know, burn? And so I don't, I don't know what you want to do with that. I just left it at, at that and I'm open for further direction. I, I don't, I think it's going to be hard to define what you want and what you mean by fireproof. For those that don't know, I, I did contact emergency management and they sent me some information on it. It's more about preventing fires within a, a building. It wasn't so much so as defining what fireproofing is. You know, it's difficult. I looked up building codes and read through those pretty extensively. I, I didn't see anything that I thought we could translate to a regulation that we should be getting involved with trying to enforce. Because you've got to remember that we don't have building codes in the, in the county.
Yeah, but just leave it in a building. I mean, basically you're saying they could put up a wood frame building. So how about if we, let's add that a little bit.
You could.
A building designed to contain a fire, you know, a fire from the inside, something along that.
I know what you mean. But see, that's a struggle. Like, what do you mean by that?
Saying it's got to be a cinder block building with a metal roof or something.
If you want to go there, if you want to say cinder block or metal or.
Isn't the first sentence, uh, under number eight? All battery energy storage systems shall comply with requirements of National Fire Protection Association. I mean, doesn't that kind of fit under what we said before about, you got to meet all the requirements that are out there?
What are those requirements?
The, yeah.
Where are those? I don't know what they are.
I haven't, I haven't gone through and exclusively looked at it. You know, this is pulled from a lot of other counties' regulations.
I think, I think at a minimum, this tells us that they, well, they, they need to, whatever those regulations are, they need to abide by them. But at a minimum, we're requiring them. If these regulations don't require them to, to put a building up, we're at least going to require them to put.
I think it should be some type of a fireproof resistant building materials rather than just a wood frame building. That's not going to do anything. You know, I think we're just, I think we're too general in our statement on that one.
And I was general for, on purpose because I don't know, I don't know where to go with it.
Yeah. What's fireproofing?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I thought we got some direction from this board when you said, yeah, you just don't want them sitting out in the open. Okay, so let's put them in a building. Okay, it's in a building.
So what are you, what are you saying, Steve, a steel building or a what?
Well, even cinder block. I mean, that's not going to burn necessarily.
Do you want that description in here? Do you guys want that description in here? Battery storage can't be in a wood framed building or what do you want? I'm fine with that opening sentence.
I don't know what those regs are though, Garth. I mean, do they have anything to do with the building?
I, I don't know what they are either, but we don't know what the, um, whatever those agencies were. We listed before, the Wildlife and Parks and, uh, we don't know what all their regulations are. We just said if they have regulations, developer, you need to, you need to meet them.
We're, we're going to say, okay.
I mean, I'm not, I'm not opposed to, uh, the building idea. I think that, that seems to be good logic, but I don't know enough about, uh, fire coated buildings to try to write regulations to tell somebody else what to build.
Well, I don't either. I mean, I know certain things, you know, materials don't burn, you know, cinder block, you know, concrete block buildings are not necessarily going to burn. You put in a cement roof or a steel roof. No roof, it's not going to burn.
They may have to have some explosive containment, um, ability as well as fireproof.
The, I'm just reading here, the NFPA eight fifty-five standard for installation of energy storage systems is a, a national fire protection standard being developed to divine, to define the design, construction, installation, commissioning, operation, maintenance, and decommissioning of stationary energy, energy storage systems, including traditional batteries.
Being designed.
So they don't have any standard yet either. They're just working on it.
Apparently, yeah.
How recent is what I was reading? So that, that could be five, 10 years old too, as far as I know. But that, that, that pretty much defines that they're, we're, we're giving them a minimum, minimum of a building. And then they have.
Pretty much.
Then they have, then they have.
I don't, I don't feel that's enough for, you know, something like, you know, you don't know how many batteries they're going to have in the building.
I think, I think, I think that NF, NFA, NFPA standard will define what they can do and what they can't do.
Mark, did, uh, did emergency management have any other comments or suggestions for this section?
No. They, they provided me a whole page document, but like I say, it was more about, you know, fire prevention. It was about, you know, the building should have sprinklers in it. The building should have smoke detectors in it, um, you know, that, that type of stuff. And I think that's beyond our, our scope of requirements here, everything that I got. And he, he had reviewed that and it was pretty much just pulling out different, different codes from fire protection and so on. So I, I, I looked at the document. I just didn't feel like there was anything that I could necessarily pull from that we could really use to help define fireproofing or whatever.
In my opinion, the fact that NFPA standards are included there, that's enough.
We could almost, we could almost strike that sub paragraph A if those standards are there.
Well, except that we, we want to require a locking mechanism on there just to keep any intruders.
Right.
For safety reasons. But, uh, we shouldn't be trying to define, uh, what kind of building it ought to be to meet NFPA standards.
We don't want to conflict with them.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we don't know what their standards are though. That's the problem.
I mean, we don't know what NFPA standards are.
Right.
I, I believe we do, but they've been used nationwide all over for a long time.
Yeah, do they require?
Continually updated to be, to meet the conditions necessary.
Do they, uh, do they govern, you know, battery storage buildings?
Yes. But what I read is, is, uh, that's, uh, they regulate where batteries are stored. Now, they may have, uh, I don't, we don't know what their standards are. I agree with you, Steve.
Yeah.
But let's just say their minimum was a, I'm, I'm just, I'm just quoting this out. I have no idea what it is, but let's just say their minimum was a three, three sided concrete retainment with a, with a fence. That was their minimum and, and we're, then we bring into the table, say, hey, that, that probably needs to have four walls and a roof. I could see that as an example. But I'm, I'm thinking, I, well, basically the, the regulation we have cited here is, I don't know what chapter of this, this thing is. Here it is. Standard for installation of sta- stationary energy storage systems. Basically, this, this site that's in here pertains to residential systems. According to this thing. Chapter fifteen of NFPA eight fifty-five provides requirements for residential systems.
That's chapter fifteen of that standard. Is there other chapters that, that address anything else?
That's what I'm trying to figure out.
Well, I guess I view NFPA standards as nothing more than, um, equivalent to ASME standards. And that's how we build everything.
And if they've encountered a, if they've countered an issue, they've, they've created standards to build it to that.
And they keep revising them. And there are nationwide committees that work on that sort of thing. Made up of industry experts that meet regularly to revise as necessary those standards, whether it be ASME or, um, NFPA. All the power plants I've ever worked in, they all have batteries because that's the backup power supply when, when, uh, when the AC system doesn't work. And they are, those battery rooms are all built to ASME stand, to NFPA standards. So it's, uh, I'm, I'm comfortable with just saying NFPA standards.
With that sub paragraph A.
Yeah.
Being included there.
Yeah.
I, I'm, I'm with you, Harley. I believe that, you know, it's, it's, we got to, we got to trust that there's, there's some experts that have.
A is specifically to us. In this county.
To your point, Garth, you know, we're trusting them to do their due diligence on the, on the regulatory side. We would trust that they're, that this, that these statutes would, would, they have done their due diligence.
Just like B is, uh, subject, is, uh, our county specific.
Yes. Agreed. So what's the pleasure? Are we satisfied with how it's written with the, with the addition of sub paragraph A?
Say that again.
Are we satisfied with that sub paragraph A with, let me rephrase. Satisfied that paragraph eight has that NFPA eight fifty-five standard? And, I mean, that's the, I know that's not a portion that's highlighted for our discussion, but it seems to be that's where we were headed. Are we all satisfied that that's going to, that's going to cover what we want in addition with the, the paragraph A that, that staff inserted?
I am.
Maybe, I just, you know, not knowing what's in.
Paragraph A just says it's got to be locked up.
I'm satisfied.
Satisfied?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm satisfied.
Let's, uh, you want us to push pause on that one, Steve? Are you, are you satisfied with it?
Well, I'd feel better if I knew what was in the NFPA standards, but, uh, you know, I'm not going to hold this thing up because of that.
You can find out for only one forty-nine ninety-nine.
Yeah, I know. I found that out myself, that one. And I can't, you reimburse me for that, of course, or?
That's where I stopped too. Okay, are we all, are we all good to go with that? Okay. Mark, that is added in.
Staff. Uh, sub paragraph C.
C is talking about signage for the battery system, um, and providing certain types of information on those signs. And then it's also talking about right below that, uh, the national electric code. Again, that's stuff that's state, federal regulations, building codes. And I don't believe upon further reviewing all this that that's something that we need to get involved in. You know, I think those are all federal regulations that they would have to comply with. And I think it's beyond our, our scope. So I don't see the need to really have those in there.
Question, um, you don't have item two down there at the bottom of the page marked out.
Yeah, on the warning signs, spacing and, and stuff should just be the minimum federal or state requirement.
Did you want to just make that item C?
We could, yeah. Yeah, I, I think on the, on the clean copy, I'm not sure.
I didn't look.
I was looking.
Why don't you just make that a C? You need to got a D. It's not a two.
It's, yeah, uh, it's on page twenty-five seven. Yeah, I just have, I just have it as a, the number one underneath, uh, letter B. Should I have it as a?
C.
I have it as a number one.
Yeah. B one, what should I make that tie in to B at all?
I can make it letter C and then.
Change C to D.
I agree.
I did that pretty quick in my haste to get this out to the board. I did that pretty quick in my haste to get this out to the board, so good catch.
And the additions on the next page and subparagraph D and paragraph 10?
So I added regarding the zoning permit and how that's related to somebody else's principal building. I added the phrase, but not expired, so that, you know, the sentence would read that, you know, the principal building is on site at the time the conditional use permit is approved or a zoning permit is approved, but not expired. So the reason I added that was to just kind of make it airtight in my, in my opinion that somebody can't apply for a permit in 2024. And then four years later, we have an application right next to that property. And that person comes back and says, well, I got an approved permit. Because he will, he'll have an approved zoning permit for me from 2024, saying that he was gonna build a house there, but he never built the house. And four years later, they're gonna put a solar farm right next to him. So that person can't come back and say, well, I have an approved permit here from four years ago and I'm not ready to build my house yet, but I'm gonna be starting here in a few years. Zoning permits are good from one year from day of issue, okay? If you don't build anything, then it expires. Conversely, you know, if I issue a permit and you pour a concrete slab and put one wall up on your house and then you pause for money or whatever reason, that permit will still be valid at that point in time. Because at least you have a concrete slab, you got a wall built, it's framed, whatever. Once you start construction with a slab, wall, then it's fine. But if you do nothing, then the permit expires. And so I'm hoping that that just clarifies that that somebody can't just come in and say, yeah, I'm gonna build this big, big house right here. And that just kind of makes sure that the solar farm can't go next to them like that.
Pulling that scenario out, is there any time limit to complete construction?
No time limit to complete construction. You just have to start, so.
D there, 500 feet of the principal building. What about the non-principal buildings? Just the regular setback of.
Hundred percent property line, property line.
Yeah, yeah. The battery building has to be 100 feet from the property line plus.
Battery ground has to be 500 feet, isn't it? Isn't that what we said?
Look, I don't have memorized.
Battery storage, 500.
Batteries, 500, yeah.
From the principal building? But how about other buildings?
Battery storage? Just on batteries or are you talking panels?
No, I'm talking about the non-participating, participating property owners. It does say battery storage.
Depends on what you're talking about. It depends on if you're like.
Battery storage will not be located within 500 feet of a non-participating property owner's principal building. How about his other buildings?
100 feet from the property line.
100 feet from the property line.
You have a barn right on the line, you could have a building 100 feet away.
They can build the battery storage building 100 feet?
Yeah.
They have to be 100 feet away from the property. Okay, that's, plus whatever you've set back your building, which can be on the property line.
Be the 100 foot, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Any questions for paragraph D? Okay, paragraph 10, you just added in the word solar.
Solar, yeah.
Good.
I don't know how I missed all that, but I did. Next page, on page 259, is similar too.
Consistent?
I just added limited scale commercial to several of the sentences.
I have a question on 259B and right under that 12A. They both start out with if required. How is that determined?
Determined by me, if the property knows floodplain. So I have floodplain maps and so.
And the soil erosion is on B right above 12.
That would be KDHE.
Yeah, so be them, it'd be the state.
Got one question, wanna backtrack just a little bit to 251081B. We're talking about two-mile radius. So 255. The second paragraph in that, in item B there, you say a commercial scale solar energy system or project or a limited scale commercial solar energy system project located within city limits, blah, blah, blah. So do we need to leave that commercial scale on there?
Nope, nope. I missed it.
Got you, Mark.
Got me, yeah. Can't get them all. That's why I have some other eyes.
Let's talk about if it's inside an incorporated city, though, which could happen, couldn't it?
I think, or is it?
I mean, the only ones you'd have, cities that would be big enough, probably just try to do anything like that would be Hutchinson.
It goes back to our verbiage. We're not talking in our. Wrong.
Paragraph A, page 255.
I know, the other day, we were talking about special periphery on the land they have around the plant.
Yeah, that would be a good, if that's in the city limits.
That's outside the city limits.
It's not in the city limits.
Yeah, okay, that's outside the city.
And Hutchinson doesn't have extra territorial.
Now, are you thinking like, say, South Hutch and their ETJ, like a project hypothetically in there?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna back up a little bit. I say, no. I think it's good because of the fact that we have ETJs. I don't think you have any. So because, you know, you have, you have three-mile ETJs from South Hutch and Nickerson. And that's not in our jurisdiction. So if they still choose to allow a commercial scale, whatever they define a commercial scale as, then.
It'll be.
It'll be all right.
If they want to put a perimeter of solar panels around their town, that's up to their business in that ETJ.
So I need to back, I backtrack on that, yeah. I think, I think it's.
Leave it at that.
Think it's fine, you say.
I understand it now.
City limits, yeah, probably not a commercial grade necessarily, but it could be in the future. You know, they, a city could annex a bunch of land and put one in potentially for whatever reason.
Well, and really, some cities that have city limits, two miles from the, where you really feel like the city is.
Ten miles out because it's 20 miles an hour.
Yeah, yeah. And by our definition, it wouldn't, it doesn't need to be 500 acres. It could be anything over 10 acres. Yeah. Which would be a lot more feasible.
Let's take a quick break. I think Steve wants, needs to walk around and give him a chance to straighten things.
We'll reconvene at, we'll reconvene at straight, let's take a, let's take a 10-minute stretch. We'll reconvene at that straight-up six.
Make way.
Yeah, I just got a leg cramp. It's killing me.
Is it ready to go? Hit the go button.
All right.
Okay. Harley, I think you have some, some knowledge back in on the third party stuff. I, I'd like to know your opinion on how that all works.
I'm talking about section one oh, one oh three, I have number seven, eight, nine. I told you I was comfortable with the language we have in there. And I tried earlier to explain some of that. And after I thought about it, I probably didn't. More information come to me and into my mind. And I also know that a lot of things have changed. I haven't been in that business for 15 years. But when I said that electric rates are regulated, and they are, for good reasons. But in addition to electric rates being regulated, service territories are assigned. And for example, a co-op can't all of a sudden start selling to an energy customer, and an energy customer can't start selling to a co-op customer. Same way with co-ops, not only co-ops, but municipal's. And those, that is said, and that's why that language would have in there under certain conditions. Yeah, you could sell to a net metering to another utility company, but you can't, you can't, if this service territory is assigned to a co-op, a private individual can't all of a sudden start selling electricity to that, that area. Regulation wouldn't let that happen. That's why I feel very comfortable with the language we have in there is very good. And we'll stand the test.
That's a good explanation. I appreciate that, Harley. I believe we're ready for paragraph one twenty-five, one, or excuse me, article twenty-five, one-ten. Twenty-five dash ten.
So last month, this, this board decided to essentially eliminate the requirements of the developer's agreement. And you'll remember, we had a list of 10 or 11 topics that we thought should be included in that developer's agreement. This board eliminated all of them except for the decommissioning agreement here. And you directed me to just take a look at that section and come back with a proposal to this board on what we should maybe keep and what we should eliminate. And so what you have here in this section, the items A through F have been struck through. And then Dawn and I, upon a lot of discussion really on this section here, we spent a lot of time talking through things here, we added letters G, H, and I. And G, H, and I essentially says that the parcel or leased land area shall be returned to the property's original condition in existence prior to the construction of the limited-scale commercial solar energy facility. Enforcement of this article shall commence when the limited-scale facility has not produced any electricity for 12 consecutive months. If requested, proof of electrical production shall be the responsibility of the applicant in order to cease decommissioning requirements. And so what that means is if, if they're challenging my directive to start decommissioning of that, of that facility out there, then they need to provide me proof that this facility has been producing electricity for less than that 12-month, you know, timeframe right there. And then lastly, upon written notification from the county, the applicant shall commence decommission of the facility within two months of the notification. And then that decommission shall be completed within six months of that notification. Extensions of time may be granted by approval of a majority of the county commission.
I've got a question for you on H, where you say, uh, shall commence with limited-scale commercial solar energy facility has not produced any electricity for 12 consecutive months. Now, if they're trying to drag out this decommissioning clause, say they leave a dozen panels active, so they're producing some electricity.
Then I would say it's not subject to decommission as it's currently reading.
It's currently written.
As it's currently written.
Yeah. So it'd be a way of them kind of getting around the decommissioning provision by leaving minimal panels active for an extended period of time if they didn't want to deal with it.
Maybe, yeah. I mean, anything's possible.
It's just possible, yeah.
I agree. That's why I think on regulations, and that's why I try and get them as crystal clear as I. You gotta remember, it's not necessarily always gonna be about maybe a co-op, it could be something, something else.
Yeah. So, you know, I guess I'm trying to get around that, any electricity thing, find a different way to word that so that it's, you know, prevent this situation from arising.
Well, how are you gonna know whether it's gonna make any or not? There's no moving parts.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah.
Well, that's where. They could shut one down for a couple of years, you'd never know it.
Well, if they, you know, that's where they have to prove that they're still generating in order to avoid decommissioning. You know, I mean, you're gonna see some activity, or somebody's gonna complain, and, you know, you'll, they think it's inactive.
It could be like tall grass, it could be maybe the fence isn't repaired. You know, things like that that could potentially trigger.
Trigger a complaint.
I'm thinking more like a tornado go through and.
Yeah, but.
Tear part of it down, and they don't fix it.
Yeah. Something like, perfect example.
Yeah. So how do you, how do we prevent?
So this is just a starting point, a discussion point, so.
If production goes below 10% of the, of the, of the expected, or something like that, I don't know. I don't know if that's, that's, I like, I like the word any, but I'm trying to, I'm trying to see what, how that would fit into what you're looking for, Steve. Cause if it would be, if they are producing a kilowatt.
Mm-hmm.
Or whatever.
How, like the Huntsville project, how is that taxed?
Praiser question. I, you know, I don't, they're taxed at whatever.
Taxed as a utility, probably.
Yeah, it'd just be up to them. I mean, I don't, we don't get into the tax end of things.
Well, I know, I was just thinking, there's, there's some point of diminishing return if, you know, if they're just trying to.
Yeah.
Well, generate a deaky amount of electricity, they've still got some overhead that they're paying, and that would.
They're, they're not gonna just keep on keeping on as well.
Yeah.
You're probably right, but.
If there is some property tax on it, they're gonna pay the property tax whether it's running or not running.
Yeah.
Right.
Exactly, yeah. As long as they own that parcel.
Right, as long as they own it.
And do we care, apparently we do, if they're current on all their taxes and they're just not generating electricity, we're gonna decommission them?
Yep. If it's not produced for 12 months.
12 consecutive months. So that was.
But, but the, there is an extension for common sense considerations included, so.
Decommission.
I feel good about that.
That's why we put that in there, cause there's other circumstances where there might be a reason it's not run for 12 months.
Right. I have a question on G. It says, shall we return to the property's original condition? I'm not sure how specific that would be interpreted. I'm thinking maybe like trees, you know, if this property was covered in trees originally, is the expectation that trees be replanted? But mostly I'm thinking of, of building that might be included and could actually have value to the property that they might not want, want to tear down, and maybe a purchaser of the property actually might want that building. But it, it wouldn't have been part of the original condition of the property.
I think the intent was like, was it pasture? Was it cropland? Was it not existing buildings or anything like that? But what the intended use was prior to this, you know, this construction of this.
If the developer owns the ground, then, and then it's whatever they deem is, is the, is the, is the baseline. If it was leased, then there would have been a property owner that can determine that. Is that what you're thinking?
Yeah, even, even if, even if they owned it and they had to decommission it, they can't just leave it a big hole out there where it's gotta go back into the initial what it was. Was it pasture, was it cropland, or whatever, like that.
So no matter what, no, whether it's leased or owned, it's gonna go back.
Yeah, and if it's leased, it's obviously gonna go back, the landowner's gonna have say in that. And this covers that.
Yep.
I appreciate your perspective, because that's why I write these and get feedback as a board. I, I doubt that a parcel of land is gonna be purchased with lots of trees on it, because they're gonna have to obviously cut those down. And so I think you, and as far as like other buildings on there, I think there's a little bit of, you can't write everything into the regulations, I think, to be really specific. I mean, you try, have to apply a little bit of common sense, I guess, what that would be. I mean, if there's a building, you know, that was on there and they wanted to tear down, I don't think the expectation of the regulations would be that that company has to rebuild that building, you know, out there for that. I think like what Dawn said, I mean, the expectation of the regulations was, hey, if it's, if it's pasture land, then it needs to be returned, you know, plant it in, in grass seed, wherever, you know, make it, make it viable again as you, as you started the project here. I don't think it means that, you know, you have to go out there and plant, you know, 500 trees that are 10 foot tall, six foot tall, or anything like that. So it just meant.
Could they leave a building?
They could, yeah. 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 If they, if they had a building out there and somebody wanted to leave, if they were gonna, if it's like leased, you know, if it's, if it's a leased property, for example, you know, and, and that property owner is getting that land back, and then he wanted to repurpose that building for something, sure, you can leave that. You don't have to tear that building down.
What if it happened to be like a highly erodible or sandy soil that began, that was being maybe farmed still, and it was in better condition after the solar panels had been there and, you know, maybe they wanted to leave it, somebody did, like if there's a house or something, and they didn't want the wind to blow the dirt toward their yard or something like that.
Yeah. I think that goes kind of along the same lines as, you know, like the, the building and stuff, or, yeah, it's fine.
It's a possibility.
Yeah. You know, the goal was that we don't want them to go in there and rip out 1,500 panels and leave holes all over the place and leave trash and junk, you know, that's just leftover when they haul all that stuff out. I think we want the land to be serviceable again, you know. If, even if they own it, it needs to look nice. We don't want it to look like a trash dump. And if it's leased, and it's going back to you as a property owner, we don't want you to be left with a huge mess. It needs to be returned to something that's, that's viable for you and is not an eyesore. There's, there's one part of this that I don't like, and I helped write it, so. But when it says return, let's say the co-op owns it, and it's returned back to the condition it was prior to the project, and maybe it was, you know, wheat ground. Well, that owner, that shouldn't have to turn that 10 acres back to wheat ground if they'd rather have it grass and not plant weed in it. So, so I don't know if we have to find.
That's what you're saying, right?
Original or similar.
Yeah.
Condition.
Yeah, so. So that may be a little, cause I like things crystal clear, and that may be a little strict there. That, that may be asking too much. That's not our intent, but when I think about it, it's like, just cause it's wheat ground, you don't have to put that back to wheat ground, but it can't just be bare ground, it's gotta be.
On Gayle's point, if they go in there and you have sandy ground that has scrubbed ground, and they go in there and plant a lot of, of nat, native grasses, and they're established during the project, you know, you've got a good stand of established grass, and you're gonna disturb it somewhat, taking everything out.
Yeah.
What do you wanna, you know, wipe out the rest of it to put up?
Yeah. Leave it grass, don't put it back to wheat, cause it was wheat before they bought it.
I think we could say something like, or similar.
Could you refer to surrounding prop, similar to surrounding properties?
Surrounded by wheat field.
Yeah.
Agriculture.
I don't know what the, I don't, that's hard to write.
We could say return to a condition.
Re-development kind of.
You know, similar to, you know, the, the, you know, original condition or something like that. You know, give you some leeway in there, I don't know.
That's hard, isn't it?
Could we, could we say something like they must submit a proposal to return the property to a, an agreeable state or?
Agreeable by who?
Well, bark.
Well, now, so.
I don't want that.
How, how would we define original? I mean, everything was native grass originally.
Well.
A little prior to that, well, I mean, how far prior? Well, I guess what I'm saying is, is native grass always an acceptable definition of original in Reno County?
Yeah.
So I. How do they determine, this is kind of off, but maybe it might help us, how do they determine what's, what qualifies for a CRP contract? They might know how that's determined. I mean, it's gotta be highly erodible.
For a what?
A conservation reserve program.
Oh, CRP.
I mean, you gotta plant in, you know, native grasses, certain selection of native grasses.
Right.
You gotta keep trees and woody plants out.
You're saying it needs to be a highly erodible piece of.
Yeah.
If, if, if project is, is included in highly erodible, needs to be planted back to native grasses and species. I don't know, that, that would be an easy clean, clean way of saying, if it, if it isn't in a highly erodible land. Of course, now we're determining that the guy can't plant weed on it where he sowed weed 10 years, 15 years prior. And I don't really wanna do that either.
I used to have CRP next door to me, it's a wheat field today.
Yeah, I know.
And it's, it's, you know, it's.
Well, you could have a.
More highly erodible.
Could you say native to, go ahead. You could have a buyer that would accept the property as is or with, you know, just remove the equipment, and maybe they're gonna develop it, build a shop or home or whatever, and they don't wanna pay for the extra expense of having that.
Reseded or whatever.
Developer put it back to some previous condition that they don't really even care about.
So how do you want us to word it after decommissioning, that it's not left out there with 500 holes and a big mess? What is that wording?
I thought we already had the words in there that says that.
I think, yeah, I don't know, okay. Alan, you were, you were questioning that, that term original. So I'm just reading this without the word original. You know, shall we return to the property's condition in existence prior to construction of the limited-scale commercial solar facility? I don't know that, I don't know that that changes the intent of it.
Say return to property's condition, to a condition that is similar to the original condition in existence prior to construction.
Yeah. We could add to the end of that station, being either cropland or native grass.
Yes.
I mean, and then that just covers it all.
Right.
Cause, you know, they may return it to that because they're gonna pull the fence around and sell it, and it's all cropped around, around there, so they turn it to, you know, they have to put this topsoil back in if they've removed any blah, blah, blah. So either cropland or native grass at the end of that sentence, such as cropland or native grass.
I'm with you.
Cause that covers anything.
That defines, that defines it.
So if we add those two words? If that's what you want.
Yeah. I, I was struggling to find that, and I, I was trying to, but that, you put in, you put in that definition, and then that gives the, the both.
Options.
The lessee, the lease, the, the lease, the landowner or the lessee, the determination, and/or the owner, which would be the, the project owner, what they wanna do.
Cropland, if he wants to build a house on it, turn it to cropland, which is bare dirt.
If he wants the, if he, if the, if the utility retains ownership of that 10 acres, they rent it right back to the neighboring farmer, and neighboring farmer pays rent on the 10 acres, the girl weed. Well, and our design intent is we don't want a derelict commercial facility.
That's correct.
So that's.
Yep.
Yep.
I was gonna add one to Gar's point a little bit here, you know, I had a note here as well, you know, I wrote this for the board, but then you could also put the onus on the applicant, say, you need to submit us your decommission plan, and then that would be subject to your review and, and changes on that. I mean, that would be one thing you could do, and that would, that would put it out there, what they're gonna do once this project is finished.
Do we, do we add that as one of the conditions?
Would, would that allow for situations, let's say I, I wanna buy this 10-acre tract, and I like that service road that you've put in there, I don't want you to go to the expense of taking the gravel out and replanning that. You know, as, as the next buyer, I'd like that. Could that be included? Could that be included in what you're saying, Mark? That, that the developer would submit a plan and based on-
Yeah, but- You're still talking, you know, 25, 30 years down the road, you know, so-
If you, if you have a buyer directly after decommissioning, that would, that scenario would work, but if it's 15 years, then you have this rock road out in the middle of a 10 acre patch, you probably would, you would probably prefer to have that taken out on the-
There, I think we're getting a little too deep, I, I think, you know, the point being kind of like Don says, you know, we, I think we just wanna make sure that we don't have 500 holes in the ground and, and trash and it's just a bunch of, of junk laying all over the place. You know, I think things like if they wanna leave a building and the applicant's agreeable with that, you know, the owners agree with that, if you wanna leave a service road in, you know, I don't, I don't think we're gonna, you know, hold their feet to the fire and say, no, it's gotta be all back to the native grass.
And that would come under your, the plan that I'm, you're asking me to submit?
I think that would be something that would be a dr, but there again, I mean, you know, you're still talking 25, 30 years down the road and property owners can change, you know, with, with that, so.
And we'll all be dead.
Yeah, that's right.
Wait, what?
Maybe not Mark, he's still just a kid. The only thing, Ron, where you talk about common sense, I've worked with a lot of planning directors and a lot of them didn't have common sense. And they're gone. Yeah, two, aren't they?
Just say pasture or cropland, or do we want them, have them submit a plan? I guess that's where we're at.
Anyway, I don't like common sense regulations because that's subject to everybody, you know, why you like it specific, but then, you know, here I'm talking on the other side where, well, you know, somebody wants to leave a building, leave a building. So I think, I think the question, do you want it, like, we have it, or do you want to, say, submit your own plan? I think you can still leave these in here and, and have them submit their own plan. We can add another sentence that says, submit your decommission plan.
Well, you combine those two thoughts and say return to cropland or native grass or by submitted plan.
I have that put down. But not the submitted plan portion.
So you want a plan? You want a submitted plan?
To me, that leaves the door open to things that we can't even think about right now.
Yeah, and that would be, yeah, that would be a living document for the applicant moving forward. I threw it out there as another option. And that, would that, would that take that paragraph, subparagraph G out then? Or would we leave that in there as a, as a overarching?
I think you'd leave that in there reworded, if you wanna, want it to return either to cropland, you know, native grasses or pursuant to a, whatever you wanna call it.
Well, submitted plan doesn't tell them what they have to do.
Nope.
It's a plan, this tells them what they have to do.
Yeah. I think we'd leave it like this. I get the living, I get the living piece of it, but it's gonna be hard to keep that, it's gonna be harder to ask for that plan to Don's point, to each applicant, because each applicant is gonna have a different plan if we don't define it here.
Let me ask a question, Mark, here, if, if we leave that in the way it's worded and 20 years from now they have one that's being decommissioned and they wanna do something else with the land, can they come to this board and request a variance of some kind?
A conditional use permit. Well, sure they could. Well, this board can rewrite the regulations anytime they choose.
Well, yeah, without rewriting like regulations, I mean, can they request a variance from that to say, but we wanna do this, the owner agrees, everybody's in agreement, but your rights wanna say we can't do it, you know, can we do it? Is that possible?
Yeah, where, where does the, where does the, where does the project owner go to ask if they can deviate from this? They can't.
Article 25 101, pretty much says that Article 25 will control the interpretation of the zoning regulations. So 25 101 3, which is, to the extent there are conflicts between the requirements of Article 25 and other provisions, is intended that the requirements of Article 25 shall control the interpretation of the zoning regulations. So to me, I would say, no, they can't, they can't request a variance. And the way our variance rules are written right now, you can only usually request a variance from our bulk regulations, which are setbacks and, and height, but, and so.
So what percentage of our regulations today existed 30 years ago?
Pretty much like none.
None of them, right? So what are the chances Article 25 is exactly written this way in 2060?
Probably none, or 100% of it might be changed, how it, how it works.
You'll have to let us know.
It'll be much like what we're gonna tackle next after this is all done, or one of the, one of the projects we have in the, in the lot split question, because we had lot splits written how many years ago into, into the regulations? And so we're now, now we're-
Right.
But you, you see, that's, that's, and to your point, that's where, that's where the next planning commission-
It does, well, and, and I like the way it's written, maybe with the, the addition for, you know, such as cropland or native grass, but I, I think the way it's written, we're telling the applicant, we don't wanna derelict commercial site when this is done.
Can you massage that to include the-
Could you say just back to native grass, and then if they wanted to go back to farmland, they could?
Well, it says that we have-
I have that now. Under letter, under letter A at the end, I just, instead of a period, I just had like a comma, and we'll just say such as cropland or native grass. So we want it back to the original condition of the property, and then we make a suggestion as saying like cropland or native grass.
So they understand what we need by original.
Have example.
That's good.
Everybody good with 25 110?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, we'll move on to 25, Article 25 dash 111.
And then 25 111 is again, I think that was toward the end of our discussion last month, and, and this board asked me to go through that section on the construction requirements and provide you a, a recommendation on what should be kept and what should be eliminated. And so that's what you see on that page.
I just questioned why, why do we wanna eliminate number four? What's the harm in leaving that in?
Do we require that for other?
We don't require it, no. And probably my reasoning for considering you eliminate that, you know, you're talking about one 10 acre site versus several hundred or thousand acres and many, many panels, and so it's gonna be one site, we have the applicant's phone number in the conditional use permit, I would know how to get ahold of it. I think putting in one 10 acre site, in theory, would be less than putting in several thousand acres.
I'm getting the rest of changes on that.
I'm satisfied with what Mark has done to 111.
Yep.
Can you, with all your wonderful notes you've been taking, Mark, can you give us a synopsis of, have we changed anything from what you presented?
So based on what I believe you said tonight and the clean copy, I think I have two changes. The one is gonna be on page 25 7, under the battery energy storage system, where it's actually just kind of an oversight on, on my part where I'm gonna just make, eliminate that number one there and change that to letter C, and as I say, the warning signing spacing shall be the minimum federal state requirement. And then change the existing letter C to letter D.
Actually, you already have it as D, I think, in the-
Not in the clean copy.
No, no, you don't, you don't, you don't.
And then the other change is what we just discussed on page 25 9 regarding the decommission agreement, and so letter A will say the parcel or leased land area shall be returned to the property's original condition in existence prior to construction of the limited scale commercial solar energy facility, comma, such as cropland or native grass. That are, that is the two changes, that are the two changes that I-
Make two little changes.
So are we still, I just, I guess I haven't heard in front of it from everyone on 25 dash 111, are we, we all good with that? Dirk?
Well, I had to do with developers agreement, you know, again, like you say, the, the scale of the project is obviously so much less than what a, a large scale commercial would be, so a lot of the things dealing with contractors and operation and maintenance, I didn't think was-
Alan, you good?
I'm good.
Let's keep her all in. I think the last item of our discussion is probably with what we're, what we have in mind for the Cheney watershed.
We're gonna talk that back.
We got, that, that cat, that, that cat was let out of the bag in February, left February 5, so we've, we've gotta, we've gotta come to some-
I would throw out a revision, you know, where I talked about last meeting, you know, was basically banning it in the watershed, and I think, you know, that, that takes out a lot of ground, out of potential development sites. I would like to throw out the idea of maybe putting in an area around Lake Cheney of, say, a two or three mile radius around the lake. 'Cause I think the, you know, that way you're not gonna have, you know, the, the main thing with the panels, and I'll keep reading more on this, is, I mean, it's like having, I don't know how many panels are in 10 acres, I have no idea, but, you know, it's like a bunch of mini roofs, so the water's gonna hit those runoff, hit the ground, and, you know, you can wind up with some erosion and runoff and whatnot. And I was thinking, if we have a two or three mile area around the lake, you know, that would help protect it, you know, whatever vegetation, crop fields or anything that are there between the solar site and the lake, you know, the ground should be able to absorb that without any problems.
Doesn't Wildlife and Parks already have a buffer around the lake?
Yeah, they do, I think we talked about that in wind, and I think it was two miles, two or three, two or three miles.
Well, was it for just for wind, I thought it was anything.
It was something.
It was, there was something there that we discussed in, during the wind regulations that there was a, there was a, there was a buffer around Cheney reservoir.
It was two or three miles.
Yeah, there was that, that proposal, and that was in place.
Was that, was that our proposal, or was that Wildlife and Parks had it in place?
That was, I was thinking that was-
No, it was ours.
Before, it was in place before it got prohibited.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, the project was like-
I can't remember.
The project was two miles, I believe, and I think we, we went to-
Extended it to three.
We extended it to three.
All right.
They recommended two.
Right, Wildlife and Parks did, yeah.
Gotcha, I was remembering something there and I didn't remember exactly how we, what that, where that was and how that landed.
It was in the regs, and then, and then subsequently it got prohibited in that area, so.
Well, I mean, I, I could live with like a two mile radius around the lake, because I think, you know, we, we need to make a gesture at least, because Wichita, I know, is, is concerned about the water quality in Cheney Lake, and they've spent a lot of money trying to develop watersheds and whatnot to protect that water. And we can do a little something, I guess, to try to help out in that regard.
Are there other, I'm not sure what I wanna say, but is there a buffer for other reasons such as development, housing development, commercial development, agriculture?
My house is a half mile from the lake.
So.
But you can't go drill an oil well in your backyard, can you?
I wish I could try.
I don't know. I appreciate your thought, but unless it's inclusive, I, I don't know that, I wanna single out a particular, what to me seems rather innocuous, uh, project.
And if we was gonna consider that, we need the language in there that allows-
But not private.
Solar panel on the roof.
It wasn't anybody would allow that or not.
You can't, you can't, we, we don't wanna run a regulation that says this house can't have solar panels.
You know, we're, we're talking about limited scale solar projects, not, not residential.
But if, and so what about, what about a private within that two to three mile buffer that you're, you're proposing? I've got, I've got a, I've got a farmstead that could, that can consume what a, what a five acre or seven acre field could do. Is that gonna, is that gonna limit me on that too, putting a buffer around the lake?
Well, that would be ground mounted systems, which would be, require conditional use permit, correct?
Private.
Not private?
Not private. If it's, if it's a farmer with a large barn or-
Ag related, you mean?
Yeah. Or even-
I thought we, we'd-
Well, we haven't written those regs yet.
Those are gonna go over into the section 15, or thing.
Yes, so we haven't written, we haven't written the residential, but as we briefly discussed, you know, where, if it's, if it meets the definition of private in Article 25, then it's maybe a permit, we, we haven't fully vetted all those regulations yet, but-
I thought we were, we were gonna make it an accessory use in Article 15, which meant if somebody wanted to go in and put a big, a ground mount system in, that they'd have to, you know, some kind of a permit. You know, that was after Don gave us those wonderful pictures of all ground mounted systems, but much more than what anybody had visualized.
Well, I think that's really, that's really to be determined right now, you know, I mean.
What if, what if, what if part of Wildlife and Parks puts in a great big marina and they want it net zero and they wanna put a bunch of solar panels up?
If it's for their private use, then they can just do it. I mean, it's just like, if it's not a limited scale, they can do it.
I don't know, I'm, I'm-
But I would, I would qualify that as, as, you know, this board hasn't fully written those regulations yet either.
I guess that's what I had in mind when I said, if we're gonna do that, we need to have some language in there to allow a business on the lake. That would be a good example, a marina, and they're trying to reduce their electric costs and get some government subsidy and-
Well, forget it, I'm just, I'm just thinking a lot.
If we're gonna start regulating stormwater runoff from solar panels, are we gonna start regulating impervious area and storm runoff for every kind of land use?
You know, I, I, I'm not trying to do that, Alan, by any means, I think, I think that, you know, the city has, Wichita has spent, as I understand, a considerable amount of money in working with the watershed districts and whatnot around the lake to create buffers as they can to filter the ag runoff and whatnot, to keep the pollutants coming into the lake at a minimum, you know, because they don't, they don't want it, they don't want those in the lake anymore, they want any kind of a pollutant in the lake. in the lake.
Right.
They're, they're doing, they're being proactive and doing what they can do to work with the landowners to try to limit, you know, the pollution from, from ag chemicals and whatnot.
Right, but a gallon of water off of solar panels, the same as a gallon of water off of a large shed, or.
Yeah.
A marina, parking lot or something.
I don't know, I don't know how many panels you have in a, in a, in a ten acre site, you know, hundred or two hundred, I have no clue how many you have. Like a roof, water just runs the solvent in sheets.
It could be that the runoff would be a net gain from one of these installations if the, if the purpose of the ground was previously tilled agriculture, and now it's, you know, by a requirement.
Sure, could be.
Were requiring grass to be substituted, so it could have.
Could be, could be, type situations you can think of.
The other thing I think about, we got a letter early on from the watershed board that basically, as I recall, said, do whatever you want.
No, they said, they don't, they didn't say do what you want. We don't wanna be involved, we're not a, regular, they're not a regulatory body, so we don't wanna be involved in, in those types of decision-making processes. I've got, I think I've got that one.
I remember thinking that, I was surprised at that, that they didn't seem to have or express an opinion about this regulation.
Since we're writing regulations for limited commercial solar energy, we're not, we're really not, and I know we need to look in parallel with the, with the private, but we're really not looking at that as a, as a written, written word right now. Would, would, is a two mile buffer a deal breaker? For a, for the limited commercial solar conversion? We've already determined that two miles is what we want in between them. So, so why, why would that, why wouldn't that two mile buffer be so bad? I'm just, just, it's more of a question to the board than it is anybody.
I've got a copy of that letter from Wichita City, Wichita City, if anybody wants to review it.
I'm just thinking, that would be, that would stay consistent, but how would we measure that? How is that measured? How did, how did we measure that with the wind? I don't even remember how we did that. From the, from the shoreline?
Probably.
Shoreline today, or the shoreline we're supposed to be?
I think it's where it's supposed to be. Yeah, from the water line now, it'd be, you don't have them right up next.
I can't remember exactly what I took back.
I don't know if we even dealt with that, to be honest with you, how we measured it.
You do something like that, though, it just needs to be something that you can measure.
What does the, I'm, I'm, what is our zoning map? Our zoning map makes a bubble around, around Cheney reservoir.
And it's not square.
Right, it's, it's kind of a jagged edge bubble. Why don't we just say we stay?
Well, cause the bubble's been filled in on the east side of the lake, since we zoned that area.
Nope, but there's that triangle, but there's, there's right directly around the reservoir, there is a, there is a buffer of sorts, that the zone, the setbacks or something that the, that the zoning map.
If you have that watershed, don't make it.
Nope, it doesn't. I was thinking of this. Yeah, I, I was thinking, I was thinking of how the zone wraps around it, that's what I was all thinking about.
That's basically about a three mile, roughly a three mile. Around the lake is what's zoned.
Yeah, this is what I was thinking of, right here, how the zone area.
I think that's where we originally came up with the, the three mile thing, because that basically is, is where, pretty much what that is, that bubble around there is about three mile.
My recollection is that the fishing game had something to do with that, that limit, and I'm trying to refresh on my mind, and I guess.
It was two.
I'd like to, I'd like some research before we try to set that limit, if that's what, cause I, I think fishing game had great influence on us, on us, about wind.
That's what I remember too.
Cause I mean, they're, they're worried about migratory predators, and, you know, eagles, and everything else that, that use, utilize the, the lake, the area around it. You know, I had, you know, a dozen geese on my lawn yesterday.
Might be hard for you to find that, that appointment, but that's my recollection, is that there was a limit around the lake that the fishing game wanted or suggested, and we were in agreement with that.
They suggested, they suggested two miles buffer around the lake with five hundred foot wind cells, and we went to three miles. We exceeded what the recommendation.
And is, was that measured from the shoreline? The shoreline with a full lake?
Yeah, I remember where that was measured. See, that's, that's what's fuzzy with me and how.
I think there was a line drawn on.
Probably the core engineers.
Whatever, I think you'd use whatever they use as their standard conservation level, the, you know, the shoreline based on the conservation level of the lake. Probably what you're looking at, cause it goes up and down, you know, it's still down, but, you know, I think that's what you base it on, is the shoreline per the conservation
I'd be willing to support that too, like you, just like you said, it's two miles from the conservation level of the lake. I'd be, I'd be willing to support that.
Yep.
Because that, that, that fits in with our two mile distance with, with between, between sites, it stays, everything is consistent that way.
So you want that two miles from the, the wetlands up northwest part of the county too, that, we did that with the wind.
If they, if they so desire.
Well, that's not in, that's not in the zone area right now.
Oh, that's right. Forget that, it's not there yet.
Right. Then we get direction to do that.
I would say, in that scenario, it would stay consistent.
Can I build a home within two miles of the lake?
Sure. Except my house is a half mile from the lake.
In fact, we've, we've blessed buildings that are within, within that.
So can I build a gas station within two miles?
Yep. Right now you can.
We've got a marina that's on the lake that has gas, you know. But I'm sure they have lots of safety standards they have to comply with because of that.
Right, but if we're worried about runoff, I mean, a gas station's got a lot of runoff, it's, it's all impervious area.
Yeah, I'd say the, the private will cross that bridge, but I think the, the limited scale for me, I can support a two mile.
Can't reg, can't regulate everything. I mean, this is, we're dealing with this, this is something that's in our control, but.
Gaila, what are you thinking? I hear, I hear your gears turning over.
I'm just listening. That must be my ear gear. I like the two mile, I could, I could go with that.
North?
I don't, I would support a buffer area, but to pick and choose what I can do within that buffer area, if I wanna spray chemicals on my corn, I can do that, but I can't have five acres of solar panels, there's a, there's a total mismatch there for me. Or I can store anhydrous ammonia, you know, there's a lot of things that I, that probably should be regulated at some level. And solar panels, again, for me, seem to be on the safe end of a lot of possibilities, including suburban sprawl. That, that is a big encroachment on wildlife areas.
You said that very well, I think, thank you.
Like I said, we're, at this point, we're not, we're not looking at, at the private side of it. So if you're, if you're on, if you were building a house and you wanted to be net zero and add ten acres and five of it was gonna be solar panels, we, we're not to that point yet, but to the commercial side of it, is really what I, what, what we're concerned
Thoughts?
I'm not even real sure what the danger is.
What do you mean danger? As far as.
The danger from the panels.
Very, okay, and, you can read whatever you want on the internet, so I've found two, if two, two, there's two conflicting sides, one that is on the environmental and one is on the developmental. Okay, there's two, two, two distinct sides. I found one, one place, actually, where they all come to the middle is, is they know what's in those solar panels. That's where, that's where both of those, both of those sides, environmental and developmental, they both agree. It's about the only place, because it's facts they cannot debate. As far as, if you're worried about heavy metals. Uh, not, what I, what I've read, I've got some, got some sites here you can look at if you want to later, but the, the panels that have ninety percent or better of the market share have fourteen grams of, of, of lead in them. Fourteen grams of lead is less than one shotgun shell, I mean, it's about half a regular shotgun shell would have in it.
Which lead shot, I believe, is still legal for, like doves or something.
No, not in, not around the lake. There's, there are wildlife areas that you have to use steel shot, but you get outside of that wild, those wildlife areas. There, you talk about risks, okay. That's, there's, there's that. I mean, I, I use that as one example. So I don't know what are, what, you know, I, I wanna be good neighbors for Wichita, and that's where I'm thinking that two, the two mile for commercials is a pretty good, pretty good number. We could probably, I mean, we could, we were, I feel our conversation almost took a hundred and eighty degrees from where we left it on, in the first week of February, so I feel, so I feel we're moving in a positive direction here. Now, risks, we're not gonna know every risk. And Gaila, you mentioned that at our last meet, we really don't know what the future holds. But there are, there are companies that are making, they're, the, the, one of the, one of the places that I, that I researched through, it was a research foundation out of Germany, okay, Europe is heavy in, in alternative electricity methods, and this, this particular research center was a, they, 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 they are, both engineering and research is what they, what it is, and they, they are trying to build the better, the better master app. And, this is where I heard the, read the ninety percentile number for, for market share on, on panels. That number of that is also changing to different technologies that's taking those heavy metals out of them. So, I don't know, I don't know what that right answer is. I, I, yeah, I, I was, I was simply amazed that I found two opposing views meet in the middle on what was exactly in a panel. Because they debated both sides of that, of that fence. One said this, and the other said this, but in the middle, they said, yes, they both have X. So, I don't know, that, that probably doesn't help us out too much with our.
But that X only happens if there's a major storm or something else.
Exactly.
Well, and even then, like, I, I'd seen a lot of that stuff on the internet, it's just a good way to be confused.
It is exact, it isn't, it isn't.
So I went, you know, there's, there were a lot of stories on a solar project in Nebraska that got hit by a massive hailstorm. And so I, I contacted Nebraska Public Power District to see if they had any information on that, and, and a couple of their managers reached out back to me. And they said that, you know, they had softball sized hail and a hundred mile an hour winds, and fourteen thousand panels were damaged. But what, what surprised me was they, they didn't have anything to pick up as far as environmental damage or trash. The, the, the panels broke like a windshield, you know, and if you throw a baseball at windshield, shatters, but all the little sandwich layers all kinda stayed together.
Safety glass.
Yeah, yeah. So they said that their, their insurance company came and had a flatbed truck and bolted the panels, wrapped them up so they didn't blow any debris out on cars, and shipped them to a recycling facility in Texas. And they didn't, they didn't have anything to clean up. So, anyway, so that, I thought that was an interesting conversation.
Yes. You know, it's, it's, I mean, it's, it's just, it's, like you said, you got it on both ways, you know, whatever camp you're in, you're gonna find stuff supporting your civilization. And, to me, I, I'm just trying to be, I think at this point, be a good neighbor to Wichita, and say, okay, you know, they've expressed some concern, so let's, let's put a two mile buffer around the lake, you know, and say we're trying to help out in some small way to prevent any, anything from happening in the future. You know, yeah, I mean, you, you can argue about the ag thing, you know, farming's been going on forever, it's gonna keep going on, they're gonna fertilize their fields and put herbicides and pesticides and everything else on them.
Well, and that's what the Cheney watershed district has, has taken, they have helped, they have helped with farming practices and that type of thing.
The farming practice and creating buffer strips and everything else to try to filter the, the water before it reaches the lake.
Is there any requirement for sanitary sewer systems close to the lake, or is that all septic?
Septic.
Well.
Unless it's, unless you've got a municipality, you know.
We vacated one close to the lake, did we not?
Vacated?
Did we, didn't, wasn't there something with a septic system we did? It's been some years ago, it'd be three, four years ago, maybe.
We still have a public.
Maybe that's what I'm thinking.
We still have it.
Yeah. But that hasn't been developed around it?
Well, it's got homes around it.
Okay.
It's right on the edge of the lake, right north of the lake.
Where we approved that storage building.
Right.
Yes.
That has two sewer cells.
Gotcha. Yeah, we haven't vacated anything like that.
What, they got the lagoons?
Two lagoons. Large sewer cells, yes, for that whole community.
And I think I'm remembering correctly the water problems at Yoder and Ruting Prairie, aren't those ag related?
High nitrates. That's in many locations, Mayo County.
Yeah, it's not just around the lake. Mark, if we were to write that up, how would that, how would that sound? Have you been wordsmithing over there while we've been talking?
I've been mainly looking at where we go, and I would probably put it right back under twenty-five-one oh one, cause we just eliminated the, the commercial solar energy system, you know, is prohibited in that incorporated area, you know, on the first page.
Oh, yeah.
So I think we can just go right back and add a number three under twenty-five-one oh one. How you write it, I, I don't, I don't, I don't like the ordinary high watermark.
I like the conservation level, that's the standard, standard lake is measured by.
I would, you would see roads, sections of ground, townships, something that's clear and easily definable, versus saying an ordinary high water.
versus saying an ordinary high watermark. Because then my, my issue is, okay, we're, we're saying that and that's fine, but who's going to measure that? Is the applicant going to measure that? Am I going to measure that? I don't know where, where that is.
Okay, let's, let's use highway, highway 14 is the west boundary. Pleasant Valley Road is the, is the north boundary.
So.
Oh, God, I'd like to say- Victory Road, Victory Road. Victory Road is the east boundary. That would be, that would be a square, square boundary around the lake.
Yes, most of the electric customers down there are sort of like go ups around the lake.
Yeah, I don't know where we're setting, but I know I am. That's all, we're all Arc Valley Electric on the west side of the lake. You know, or, I mean, same area. You can direct me and I can give you some various proposals or something. I, I don't, I don't know what you want to do with that. I mean, I will write whatever you want. I just, I don't know how ordinary high watermark is enforced.
Well, how was this map drawn? How was this map drawn? That shows the lake. Somebody wants to do something, you just got to measure.
Well, that-
From that.
That's just, that's just the location of the lake, that's not the ordinary high watermark.
It's all the old base, it's all the elevation.
Or did somebody just draw that off an area?
Yeah.
That one snapshot in time?
It could have been. I don't know the, where do we get this? The order county can-
Maybe the map, I mean, I think the-
Don read the public works. Oh, shoot. Don, don't read the map.
That was the zoning, that's the zoning line.
Yeah, that circle there is just where it was zoned.
I think they're asking for the blue.
How would you that, man?
Yeah. What's the, what's the source?
How do you draw the water?
We, we downloaded a shape file from, from-
Is that from the state or is that?
Yeah, from DAS, from DAS.
Oh.
They gave us the watershed.
That's their mapping.
That's, yeah.
It's all elevation.
Well, now where did DAS get it from then? Because we don't, we're not primary data creators.
Water here, or was that way, water here, and was that way? It's all from elevation.
Is it, is it an NHD layer, the National Hydrography Dataset?
I didn't get it. I, we had one of our other guys go out and grab it. Because I contacted the state and the state directed me to DAS. And then our technician went out to DAS and grabbed that file. And then we import, I think originally it was a CAD, CAD file. Oh, yeah, I mean, if you just do, if you went like highway 14 up to, uh, like Pleasant Valley. But if you go on the, on the east side, you go over two miles, go on the rail, and you've got a big jump there, which you got five.
Okay, you just list the section numbers?
Oh, God, I don't, I don't want to say it. That would be, that would be a good way of defining that.
So, so I have to ask you a question. So you don't want, and you may be very right, you don't want these within two miles of the lakes because of runoff going into the lake?
Or what have you?
That'd be a good start. So do you want it not within two miles of the North Fork and Nisko River clear through the county? Because that all runs into the lake.
And the tributaries that run into that.
Oh, yeah. I mean, so the whole water, you're back to the whole water.
I just want you to think about it.
Yeah, well.
And here you can have your map back.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Touch your name printed. I know, I've got all these maps. I, I had them created. Thanks, but.
Don't go on it, Don, you make us think.
I know, I didn't want to say it, but I thought.
But that's all right. I appreciate it.
I mean, so I think your decision should be, is there really a potential for, for polluting that? Or is it being a good start? I don't know, it's two separate subjects to me. Because that helps answer the question I just asked you.
Okay, it's, it's the, it's the good neighbor in me, the emotion in me that says the two miles was, would be the right number. If you drill it down to, to what data I've found, and I don't, I'm not a scientist by any means, nor am I a data hound. But what I found was that the risk is very low. If we were to place them, even if a, a potential one, to your point, Garth, even if we had a private one that's 10 acres right along the lake, I don't think the risk would be there. So if I take the, take the emotion off of it, I don't know that we, I, I don't know that we can dictate.
I by no means want to direct you in any direction. I just want it all thought out.
But you, 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 yeah, that's all right. Because you're making me think about it, that, you know, in a different light.
Well, what does that do? I mean, maybe I want a two-mile buffer around my, yeah. I mean, once we open the door to buffer, good neighbor buffer zones, I don't know what might come through there.
Exactly.
I mean, being a good neighbor is not contaminating the wa, water. Okay, so what does that mean?
Just have to restrict the whole ferving, three-mile area around the lake.
And shooting shotgun shells.
And then shoot, yeah. Well, you, I mean, you can't use, you can't use lead down around the lake in waterflood. It's all steel shot. But think of how many- It's all steel shot. Think of how many rust skirts are out there shooting at quail somewhere out in-
Quail and pheasant, yeah, you could, you could shoot those.
You can, I can blow through 25 to 50 ounces of lead in a deck. Pretty fat bat of shot. Dove especially. That's, 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 that's a different story. So, and then with knowing that, I mean, that's, that's anecdotal, but knowing that there's a half ounce in every solar panel. But what Alan brought with his findings, that all they were, were just the glass was broken, but they were still intact.
Safety panel, yeah.
Were all solar panels constructed that way? Well, I don't know. Ninety, ninety, 90% of the market share is, is, is all built in, in that, in a fashion. So you would assume, there's that assumption where it was something in there.
You know what that does?
I get, I get. Take, take the example that Alan, how many, how many panels?
14,000.
14,000 of them, so that's, the chances, you look at the probability of, of a project coming here that would have different panels would be pretty slim.
Yeah. And this was a 4.3 megawatt facility, so I think it's, it was quite a bit bigger than what we're looking at here.
Well, out of respect for Harley's Chicken Dinner, do you want a motion? I mean, I, I'm feeling like we're kind of stuck here.
I guess where, 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 where we're at is what, what the, what, I, we have two options. If, if we're worried about Harley blowing weather and, weathering out and blowing away, we need to probably recess for another discussion. I'm not too, too terribly excited about that. But I guess the other option would be to decide what, what we believe is right around, in the, in the zoned area of the watershed. And-
Is there information that we're missing for this discussion?
Nothing I know of. I don't think so. I think we've, I think we've got a pretty good handle on it. And I'm, I, I'm going to back up. I think, you know, originally I was supporting that two-mile range. And if I take the, if I take the emotion out of it and look at, look at all the above, I think, I don't think there's near enough risk for it to not, for us to regulate.
And I guess I, I understand and accept the fact that our elected representatives may take a different approach. And I, I know, and I have, I expect, I respect that. That's what they were elected to do and paid that big salary.
You would defer to the county commissioners is what you're saying.
I'm not in the place that I think we ought to write a regulation that, that doesn't have, it's not well-founded. And we haven't heard anything here that's well-founded about why we ought to regulate away from the lake. If, if the so-being, our elected representatives choose that route, I'll, I'll support it. But, you know, I'm not, I'm thinking that, I don't want to be part of a regulation that is not well-founded.
I think Harley said what I was trying to think, but my, my post-pre-supper brain had not, did not have enough sugar flowing through to articulate as well as Harley could.
But like, like the, like I said earlier, Garth has said some things, and Steve has said some things, and you've said some things that's had some influence on how I think about all this. But that doesn't mean I'm locked in, in any way.
Well, I think Harley made a good point in that, you know, what, discussing this boundary around the lake when it relates to the city of Wichita, to a certain extent is a political issue. Maybe that's where we need to let the, let the politicians handle that. If, if, you know, they want to come back and say, you know, we want a buffer around the lake, then so be it. But for expediency, we need to give them something to start from.
I'll say it again, we as a collective committee, without well-founded documents of some sort, we shouldn't be writing regulations without good means, good basis.
Okay, I think what, Galen, you were, you were on the two-mile buffer idea. What are you thinking now?
I see the part about regulating, so, yeah, I don't know yet. I'm just kind of thinking, but I, I'm coming that way more. I, uh, I do, I do feel like we need to address the crowd that came and talked. And I know that was commercial then, but they were, their concerns were of the solar panels themselves and what came out of them. And I know that's not very much, but I don't know how much it takes over 30 years. So that's where I'm kind of hung up on.
I like what Russ is saying, or what Alan's provided, that, you know, there's very little, you know, metal, heavy metals, or you want to call that, in the panels. And the only way they're going to be a concern is if the panel shattered. And, you know, the energies fall out on the ground. And what Alan's saying is they're all safety glass, and the panels don't, don't shatter. So they're basically intact. So I don't see there's a whole lot of a, of an issue with it, to be honest with you.
We still have some work to do relative to our ground-mounted.
Or private, yes.
And, and we still have that task in, in front of us. And to make the decision today doesn't seem like it could be part of our future discussion about ground-mounted panels. We will, they all change different. We might feel like that we need to, no restriction. And then again, we might feel like, okay. We, we heard at public hearing, we had a, a lot of comments. Probably the most impactful was the one where they talked about this, this hailstorm that destroyed a, and now Alan has gathered some data, and that doesn't support that at all.
So, okay, back to you, Garth, what are, what's our, what's our route? We can come up with something today that would, that we could, we either say, we either come collectively together and say, no, we, it has become a non-issue, or we collectively come together and say, staff, please write us something up that, that would, that would support our wishes. Those are, that, those are the two options. Now, if, if that means going, if that means tonight, or whether that means we all want to, want to kind of chew on things a little bit longer, we can do that also.
I, I'd argue for it's a non-issue, but let's go ahead and do our other work. And it may become an issue with us for many reasons. One is, uh, the, our elected commissioners might come and say, hey, guys, do it.
Yes, because this is going for review. It's not like we're making the final, we are, we are giving a draft and it could come back for different review.
Okay, I, I'm confused when you say we have more work to do for ground-mounted. Isn't that what you said?
We have to write some regulations for ground-mounted panels.
So let me say something, I, I think. What we're talking about tonight is limited-scale commercial solar, not residential. So as of, what it appears like to me right now, the only question on finalizing these for you to send to the commission is with a couple of changes and your decision about this buffer around the lake. And then these will be complete, and then we'll have to come back to the residential. This is, this, this will go before the Board of County Commissioners on limited-scale solar system. And you have not addressed everything on the residential yet, and this is not a residential.
Yeah, I, I totally understand.
So you lack one decision here tonight on these going forward.
Take them as they're written with the changes that we have in, that we've-
And that, or unless you want to add something on this around the lake.
The residential will require another public hearing since we're moving it to Article 15.
See, we're moving it off of this.
We originally noticed it as part of this document when we had commercial, but when-
I'm still arguing that, that it's a non-issue at the present time.
I'd be willing to make a motion. Okay, Chair will entertain.
Well, just, did you have a question? If, if, I want to kind of say something about what your duty would be with, with any type of, of motion, okay? Because now we're going back to the November 9th agenda. And so as you know, there were three separate text amendments in there. We had, we had the one with the table of contents, that's the first one. Then obviously we had the solar regulations. But there was also the third one of creating Article 1510514A, which would have placed, uh, commercial solar regulations in that document. That's on the agenda. So that's no more now because we're not discussing commercial solar regulations. So any type of, of motion in favor or so of this, of this recommendation to take to the commissioners should include the suggested changes that I have previously noted to this board, the adoption of the table of contents as written. But then also, you'd want to also have a motion to withdraw from consideration the amendment to create Article 1510514A because now that's going to be dismissed. And we'll have to come back later when we do Article 15 amendments to the residential. Then we'll insert something in there in Article 15 in a different spot that says limited-scale commercial regulations instead of commercial.
So, so there's two, two motions that you're going to need from us. One to, one to accept the suggested changes as, as we discussed tonight and adoption of the table of contents. Can that be done in one motion?
Yes.
Okay. And then the other motion is to withdraw the, the Article 15.
Article 15-10514A.
Did you get that?
No. Okay. So, there's, so, thank you for that guidance. I appreciate that. Because that, we were just going to storm right on in, and we were, we were going to be a bull in a china closet and not know what we're doing.
That's why, that's why I was telling you. Because we got, we got to go by the agenda. And there's three amendments on, on the agenda.
It's only been a few months, and we, I can tell you, I don't have that, that agenda, that, that meeting agenda ahead of us. Shame on the chair.
Shame on the chair, yeah. So that's why I, I've saved this. Because we need to officially withdraw, not deny, but officially just withdraw from consideration that one text amendment.
Okay. So, Chair, Chair will entertain. We'll start with the motion to withdraw. Chair will entertain a motion to withdraw Article 15-10514A. So moved.
Second.
Been moved and second to withdraw that article. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. Staff, please call the roll.
Shortfayer?
Yes.
Strand?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Seltzer?
Yes.
Macklin?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
And Gertson?
Yes.
Okay. Second motion Chair will entertain will be to accept the suggested changes as discussed in the, in Article 25 of the limited-scale commercial solar energy regulations, and the adoption of the table of contents as written.
And the recommendation, okay.
I would say I'll move.
Second.
Been moved and second. Any discussion? Seeing none. Staff, call the roll.
Shortfayer?
Yes.
Strand?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Seltzer?
Yes.
Macklin?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
And Gertson?
Yes.
So I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mark. So these, this will be changed with the recommendations that you requested.
I read to you previously.
It changes. And then this clean copy will be sent out to you, and sent to the public, and sent to the Board of County Commissioners of the recommend, this is your recommendation that that's what these regulations.
That's correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Yes. I can, I can send you the corrected copy, just so you can have that for your, your records. And then we'll, we'll get that placed on the website. And then we'll get this on the County Commissioners' agenda sometime.
Okay. Fantastic. Is there any other business to be brought before this board tonight?
Move, adjourn.
Second. Been moved and second to adjourn. All in favor of adjournments, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.